All right, at one o'clock. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners for October 18th, 2022. We begin our meetings traditionally with the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Today, we're going to ask Pastor Doug Alexander, who every time he shows up, we ask him to do it, to do our invocation for us. And after that, we're going to have our retired Chief Petty Officer Douglas Wright lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you all are willing and able, we'd ask you to stand at this time.
First of all, let me thank you guys for allowing me to be here today. What a blessing it is to be with you guys also. Let's pray. Father, thank you so much for this commission. Thank you for this meeting. Thank you for the time that we come together. Thank you for your safety, your love and your power. We are so grateful for everything that you give us. Thank you for the county, Citrus County, that we live in, we're very proud of, and we thank you for the citizens of Citrus County. Lord, we pray a special prayer for those hurricane victims and all those, so, Lord, the first responders that's taking care of them. Lord, we ask you to, as we pray, that we would all join together in the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thou is the kingdom, in the power and the glory for ever and ever. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Thank you, Pastor Alexander. Thank you, Chief Wright. Can we have a roll call, please?
This is a regular meeting of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners this 18th day of October 2022. In attendance are Chairman Ronald D. Kitchen Jr., First Vice Chair Ruthie Schlebach, Second Vice Chair Holly Davis, Commissioner Scott Carnahan, and Jeff Kennard, County Administrator Randy Oliver, and County Attorney Denise A. Diamondley.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, on the agenda, I would like to add an emergency item. We'll call it E7. It would be a discussion to cancel the October 31st meeting, and it needs to be on the agenda to vote on it, and it needs to be an emergency item since this is the last meeting before then. Did my microphone just go off, or can you hear it okay? Okay. So with that said, that would, and there's no deletions or any other additions, I'll be looking for approval of the agenda.
So move.
Second. Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Carnahan, second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. Next item is the consent agenda, which consists of B1 through B6. What is your pleasure?
Chair, take it in entirety.
Okay. Is your microphone on, Commissioner?
Yes, sir, it is.
See, I'm having a hard time hearing everybody, I'm sorry. Okay, so-
Welcome to my world. You can buy a hearing aid over the counter.
Okay. But see, it's gonna be one of those kind of days back in two.
Yeah, right.
Commissioner Carnahan makes the motion. I think I heard Commissioner Kennard going there and make the second. And so, is there any public comment on the consent agenda? Board, is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. Next is proclamations. We have three of them.
Chair, take proclamation C1 through C3.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Carnahan, second by Commissioner Schlebach. Any other board discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. Commissioners, you want to come down front for the presentation?
As you're coming down, folks, anybody representing domestic violence awareness month, come forward, please.
How did you do today, huh?
Yes, sir.
I did half the six.
No, we did that last week.
Now, six is your mission.
No, I'm at five. It's a mess. Okay. The Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida proclamation Domestic Violence Awareness Month, whereas domestic violence is a crime that threatens the safety and lives of hundreds of Citrus County citizens, Citrus County residents. Every year, domestic violence is a pattern of behavior that individuals use against their intimate partners or former partners to establish power and control. Any person can be a victim of domestic violence regardless of age, sex, ethnicity, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, or religion. And whereas domestic violence traumatizes victims, harms families, threatens communities, and increases the likelihood for children who are subject to it to grow up and inflict violence on others in the community, creating a cycle of violence that our community must be unified to stop. And whereas victims require help to find compassion, resources, and healing they need, and domestic abuses must be held accountable and punished to the full extent of the law. Whereas the powerful partnership between state and local agencies, nonprofit and private organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the courts, healthcare, legal providers, faith-based communities, and educational institutions are creating a coordinated community's response to domestic violence. And whereas CASA remains committed to lead the community along with the Coordinated Community Response Team to raise the public awareness about how to prevent, recognize, and stop domestic violence. Now therefore, be resolved, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, does hereby recognize October 2022 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and encourages all Citrus County citizens to work collectively to promote healthy and peaceful relationships, and bring an end to domestic violence, signed by all five county commissioners.
Thank you to our county commissioners for your service and proclaiming October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Last fiscal year, CASA provided emergency shelter to survivors of domestic violence and their children, totaling 9,239 nights in our shelter, and provided services to 1,510 survivors in Citrus County and their children. That was over 300 more people that accessed our life-saving services than the previous year, sadly. In addition, we provided violence prevention education to over 1,400 students in Citrus County. I ask our community to recognize that domestic violence is a community issue, and that no one, it is not one to remain locked behind the doors of a single house. Violence in our homes will continue to spill out onto our streets if we do not speak out and take action. Every single one of us knows someone who is the victim of domestic violence. It can happen to anyone, and is more prevalent than people realize. Anyone, regardless of gender, race, sexual identity, or orientation, or socioeconomic status, can become a victim of domestic violence, and it is more than physical violence alone. On October 1st this year, I'm proud to say that 150 of our citizens joined together to speak out and take action in CASA's first-ever Domestic Violence Awareness Walk Step Up for Survivors. They stepped up to recognize that domestic violence in one home affects our entire community. I want to also recognize our Coordinated Community Response Team, the members that are up here that were able to make it. This is a group of leaders that's comprised of the State Attorney's Office, Citrus County Sheriff's Office Domestic Violence Unit, the Victim Advocacy Division, and the Records Division, Citrus County Fire Rescue and EMS, Citrus County Clerk's Office, and Second Chance Counseling, a batter's intervention provider, the Department of Children, Families, and numerous service providers. This group is improving our community's response to domestic violence, and just in this past year, the group developed improved local protocols and responses to survivors of domestic violence strangulation. This will ensure victims are assessed appropriately by first responders and provided emergency medical care. Again, I'd like to thank the Board of County Commissioners, and I encourage everyone to become involved with CASA in our efforts to end domestic violence in Citrus County. Thank you.
Tracy Phillips with the Clerk's Office. I'm just saying a couple words on behalf of Clerk Vic. It's truly a partnership that we have with CASA in order to be able to help the citizens in Citrus County apply for the protective orders. We, our office, helped almost 1,000 individuals between September of 2021 and September of 2022, and I want to thank our deputy clerks, a couple of them are in the room today, because it, it's not easy to sit across from these individuals, but it is so rewarding to be able to help them. And these clerks, along with so many others, approach the situation seriously and with urgency. And Sunshine, I can't thank you enough and your team for the partnership that you have given to Citrus County Clerk's Office to be able to aid these citizens.
Ready? There you go. The Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida proclamation mediation week, whereas Citrus County, Florida has been a leader in recognizing and promoting mediation as an alternative to litigation, and whereas administrative agencies, courts, and court-sponsored programs use mediation to effectively and efficiently resolve disputes. And whereas mediation is a voluntary, non-adversarial, and informed method of conflict resolution that empowers individuals and businesses to develop solutions to conflicts which are mutually agreeable and tailored to their particular needs. And whereas mediation is taught and practiced in many of our schools not only as a means of resolving individual disputes, but also as a means of achieving more, achieving a more peaceful society. And where a community-based mediation program strengthens relationships among Citrus County, Florida's citizens by assisting in the resolution of a neighborhood and community conflicts. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, does hereby proclaim the week of October 11th through 17th as mediation week. And in Citrus County, Florida, there are just all citizens joining recognition, recognizing the significant contributions of peaceful conflict resolvers, and extend greetings and best wishes to all observed mediation weeks, signed by all five county commissioners.
Good afternoon. I'm Barbara Harbin, and I'm the last of the Mohicans, I think, the oldest mediator, volunteer mediator in this county. We were started under Judge Mark Yurman 20-plus years ago, and we have continued other a little differently because of Zoom and COVID and other things. Right now, our group is little because we're doing it by Zoom unless we want to travel outside the county, because here, in this county, we still are not going into the courtroom. Every other county in our district is but us. So Zoom has changed things a little bit for us. I have Pac Cadet with me and Mike Belkin, and our Director John Nagy is somewhere in the building, I believe, but I haven't seen him. Other than that, we would like to be able to get back to a courtroom, and hopefully, after our wonderful luncheon last week, something will happen in the future to bring us back into the courtroom when the new building is completed over there at the Coke Building, because supposedly two courthouses are going in there, and that would be one of them, I'm sure would be Small Claims Court. So we thank you all for your support and hope we can get in that building sometime in the next six months, maybe. Anybody else want to say anything?
Yeah. Good afternoon. I'm Kathy Rector. I'm the Court Operations Manager, and on behalf of all the judges and court administration, we'd like to thank you all for everything you do and the amount of hours you spend volunteering every year. Thank you.
For those individuals representing pregnancy, infant, and child loss awareness month, come forward, please. The Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida proclamation Pregnancy, Infant, and Child Loss Awareness Month, whereas families who have experienced the loss of an unborn child or infant can carry the loss with them forever, and it can, and it can sometimes cause heart-wrenching grief as they struggle to understand why their loved ones was taken away. And whereas the great majority of grieving families feel alone, not understood, and fearful on top of their feelings of grief, leading in many cases to an inability to manage or even face their grief. And whereas many adults erroneously believe that only the mother feels the grief, so much that, so much that children and their family members have been often called forgotten mourners. Pregnancy, Infant, and Child Loss Awareness Month hopes to raise awareness of the painful impact of the death of a loved one has on the life of the whole family, and to provide ways for caring adults to let grieving families know that they're not forgotten in the midst of their grief. And whereas Pregnancy, Infant, and Child Loss Awareness Month, established in 1980 by President Ronald Reagan, and observe each year in the month of October, and this year on October 15th, 2022, thousands of families from all walks of life across the United States were joined together to show the support for lost families by participating in a National Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Wave of Light event. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, does hereby proclaim October 2022 as Pregnancy, Infancy, and Child Loss Awareness Month, and encourage citizens to increase their understanding and awareness of the families, excuse me, who have experienced the loss of a loved one, signed by all five county commissioners.
We are at open to the public. Is there anyone here that wishes to address the board at this time?
And I put my paperwork in. I just want to remind you to the county that I'm here in support and see on Juneteenth, see what discussion and what direction the county will be going in that direction. And it's a very passionate thing for me, and we also have other people that might want to say something to you guys, but it means a lot to us, and we're here as a citizen of Citrus County to make sure that hopefully you guys can see our passion and, and see how much we're concerned, okay? So thank you so much, and thank you for all your support with the hurricane now, sending stuff down to Fort Myers. God bless you guys.
Thank you. Have the next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Sabrina Watson. I should have a letter on file now to speak for a nonprofit.
Which one?
So, oh, thank you. Real quickly, I would just like to address-
What not? Who are you speaking on behalf of?
I'm sorry. The Exceptional Life Project, whose mission is to provide community education, develop and encourage engagement of citizens, research, document, and raise awareness of a multitude of items. I want to speak today on Livestream. After much review of the conversation at the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners regarding bringing Livestream to our county, I feel like these concerns need to be shared with the public. I know that you all recently received some emails from Diane Stein. There's a number of things that really need to be discussed. First of all, GuideStar reports that Livestream has $60 million in assets and $60 million in gross receipts. So it's concerning that the taxpayers would be asked to contribute $2 million in taxpayer funds to an organization that seems to have a sufficient amount of money. These funds would help build a building that would belong to Livestream until the contract changes. It's not if, it's when. Then the discussion is to sell or lease back to the county something that they paid to build. We had some word salad about this being an investment, and investment implies a return. So I think there's some questions that need to be asked of Livestream. Is this a treatment center or a holding and evaluation center? 60 beds, is that necessary? The lack of ability to hold them accountable is extremely concerning as well. The lack of available reports or public records, so I'd like to know if those have been received by the county. The lack of performance measures, and the complaints regarding services which include multiple sexual assaults. I know that you guys received that 13- and 20-page documents, both of them. I'd like to point out on page 12 of your 20-page document, under adverse media, it says this facility has been the news numerous times for violent patient deaths or sexual assault, patient-on-patient, or even staff-on-patient. This company has a history of being a dangerous environment for patients resulting in physical harm, threats from patient-on-patient violence, and staff sexual misconduct. As well, it has numerous reports of staff negligence which lead to patient deaths. This is in the Lake Legal News. So here's my, and there's some other concerns here, actually. There are some current concerns that Commissioner Carnahan brought up about a potential backdoor deal when excluding the county administrator from the meetings. And I find it very concerning that Toby Phillips was in attendance at this meeting, and she happens to be a possible contender for the Citrus County Administrator, yet our own Administrator was not there, but an applicant for his job was. So, you know, the public needs to be aware of that as well. There's concern about the money. I know that the hospital board stated that they would not contribute if the county does not own that building at the end of it, and it doesn't stay there in perpetuity. So what is going on here? Do we not have better options for healthcare than this? I think that the public should be very concerned. There's a number of concerning items. We've got medical professionals who make their money in the medical field pushing this organization, which clearly has not a lot of very good things to be said by a lot of people. We've got a lobbyist named Gene McGee who's playing both sides of the field, lobbying for Livestream as well as lobbying for the Board of County Commissioners. How exactly does that work? I don't think they even allow that in like regular deals, like even real estate. There's a buyer and a seller's representative. Then we've got the obvious money issue. We seem to have some kind of pass-through of money where it passes through a whole bunch of organizations who take a cut off the top before it actually gets to the organization who's supposed to be using it. And then, of course, there is the status of the organization itself, which again should be highly concerning. So I just want to bring that to the public, public's attention, and I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can we have the next speaker, please?
My name is Christine Wright. I'm a native Citrus Canaan, and I'm a native Floridian. I'm 70 years old. I grew up in the great, great town of Hernando, Florida, along with Pastor Doug and some others. Okay, so what I want to talk to you about is obvious. I have my shirt on, Juneteenth. Okay, and June 17th, 2021, President Joe Biden signed a declaration declaring June 19th as Juneteenth in 2021. Okay, then Nikki freed June 17th, 2022, tried to make a proclamation for Florida to accept the idea. The background, on June 19th, 1865, Major General Jordan Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas, proclaiming the end of slavery in the state, one year after the announcement that there was going to be a Jubilee Day because we had heard that we were free. Okay? Other states had their own idea of the celebration. Florida's occurred May 20th, and I remember as a child growing up in Hernando, we celebrated on May 20th. The mothers got together and made covered dishes, the desserts, and the men did fish fries. Over a period of time, this celebration went somewhere. I guess because I went somewhere. I went to college, I went to Brabird County, but I came back as a 65-year-old adult. Okay? So with that said, I think we need it for our children, because so many things are happening in this United States. Even when I was a child, I can remember going through the civil rights movement. Okay? Civil rights movement is a lot of reason why I was able to go to Florida State University, graduate, and I did 30 to 40 years of teaching school. I did eight years here in Citrus County at Inverness Middle School. Then I moved away. I went to Brabird County, did the rest of it there, and I came back here as a sub where I was needed. However, COVID killed that, so I didn't go back. But I'm 70 now, there's no need to go back. But we really need Juneteenth for our children, because we are losing them, and we need it so badly in this county and various other places.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, I ask you not to applaud. If you're new to our meetings, we ask you don't applaud, you don't cheer, you don't boo. We maintain proper decorum. Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Marion Hansen. I've lived in Inverness for the past 10 years. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Having a public notice anywhere online is inefficient. Public notices need to be in the newspaper. We are a very poor county where the average person is out of work or getting a non-living wage. A living wage means you can afford a home and a car and have a nice life working 40 hours a week. Most of our children are starving. The sheriff's salary, the sheriff's salary is $180,000 a year, and now the new Citrus County admin is making $197,000 a year. That's crazy. The everyday Citrus County citizen can't even afford an apartment. So no one in Citrus County would see an online public notice, even if they could afford a laptop or a computer. Our internet here is abysmal. I have internet, I can afford to pay for it, I'm lucky that way. Half the time, I can't get on. A friend of mine was doing online lessons, and she lost the job opportunity because she couldn't do the lessons online. And your unemployment website, oh my God. So jumping topics, I am very heartened to hear about this Juneteenth. We absolutely should do it, especially after the anti-gay and banning books and all the other nightmares that have come across our path. It's time to come together, find some common ground, make some progress, do progressive things for our community. Our citizens are suffering with all the fighting with Republicans against Democrats and 45 Club. It's time to stop. We need to find some common ground and come together as a community and start building for everyday citizens to have a better life. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have the next speaker, please?
Once again, it's me, Rhonda, Rhonda Santos. Yes, thank you. I'm here to speak on several issues. One was about the Chronicle, your post in the Chronicle is very important to this county because we have shoddy internet service around here. In my area, we only have one server provider, and they are just dismal. You should see how many comments are on Nextdoor about people that are just so fed up with this one internet provider. And the other option would be to be able to look it up on your cell phone. Well, guess what? Cell phone coverage in this county is also dismal. So many times, I'm traveling around the city, the county, and you can't find a decent service. So therefore, how are we supposed to be able to look up anything on the internet if A, our cell phones can't do it, and B, our home internet doesn't do it? So are you going to post a big sign somewhere on a blog? I don't know. But that's why we need the Chronicle. Second, Juneteenth is very vital. Yes, we need it. Here's why. I was born and raised in Miami, Florida. In Miami, Florida, we have a mix of all kinds of people, and we don't typically have animosity amongst the groups. I mean, I grew up, the family right behind us was a family of six black kids, and we were six white kids, and we all played. We didn't know any different. When I came up here in 2005, I was standing at the Regions Bank in Beverly Hills, waiting to get in, and I heard somebody in a vehicle drive by, and he yelled out the N-word. I was appalled. I'd never heard that in Miami. That's this county. I'm sorry, now you're seeing all this, the governor promoting that we need to whitewash our history. I'm sorry, we're not whitewashing anything. You can't hide the past. Juneteenth is a celebration that needs to be recognized because that was the last group of slaves that were freed in the United States. We need to recognize that there was pain and suffering that was involved, and we, even though I'm white, I'm Hispanic, or whatever, we still need to recognize it because it is still a painful past, and, and my friends, the black community, are still being discriminated against, and I am not having it. against, and I am not having it. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Can we have the next speaker, please?
Good afternoon. My name is James Pack. This is my friend Nancy Poffey, and we are community friends. We're pickleballers, and we came here to speak to you about building our community, and perhaps you guys would entertain funding a pickleball field, yard, courts of play in Homosassa. We reside in Sugar Mill Woods. There are a number of public venues out there. However, they will not accommodate any large numbers. There's two and four courts. I know Jim LaGrone Park has four courts, and we play out there pretty frequently, three days a week. But there's 40 to 60 players, depending on, at any given time, 40 to 60 players, and you can get 16 players on a court. Now, I'm sure all of you guys have heard about the popularity of pickleball. Some of you may have played, some may not, but it's a wonderful sport, and it fosters a lot of friendships and promotes a lot of goodwill among neighbors and communities. Health benefits, and you know, we were able to be out here all year round in Florida playing, even in December, January, and February, when it's typically cooler, we're still out there. We put our jackets on, and then we shuck them as we get warmed up. But we feel like this is also a benefit. If you guys would consider this, this is a great benefit, opportunity for the county to see some influx of additional vacationers. They come for many reasons. They come for our water sports, our beautiful river systems and whatnot. But I know my wife and I, and Nancy and her husband, and some of our other friends that left today, as a matter of fact, to go on vacation, we look for places that house and support pickleball players. And I think that would be a big draw in addition to our many other activities around here. I think pickleball would be a great draw for outside visitors to come and have another activity to do besides scalloping and crowding up our rivers.
And there's a lot of, I know there's a new campground going up on 19 there in Homosassa, and a lot of existing campgrounds that look for that type of thing as well, people are coming in to visit the county. It would be nice to have something in the southern end for them.
Yeah, and our proposal is off of Grover Cleveland, around the public library. I don't know, are there courts there now?
I think there are tennis courts there now, but I don't think.
Tennis courts can be, you know.
They can be retrofitted, but it's not quite the same as dedicated to the ball courts.
There's some net height differences. There's some, yeah, we can barely keep up with our actual pickleball courts, much less double lines from repurposing tennis courts. But it's a great activity, and it's a great way to foster.
Your time has expired. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. If one of you talked at a time, then I give the other one another three minutes, but since it was a joint presentation, I have to count it as one. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Ernesto Rubio with the Florida Department of Health. I have a little announcement for you, and I'm actually going to read something, which is not my typical mode. But this is to notify you that I will retire from the Florida Department of Health effective May 31st, 2023. After a long career of service, 23 years with the military, and now 20 years with the state, it is time for my wife and I to enjoy this time in our lives. I cannot express how satisfying work for the Florida, working for the Florida Department of Health has been over these last 20 years. These last seven years leading the Department of Health here in Citrus County have been the best of my career. While I am sad to be leaving, my role as the health officer for Citrus County, Kathy, my wife and I, are looking forward to the new adventures in our lives. So I wanted to make that official to you. We will work with you. The state of Florida, my understanding, will be announcing my position probably in November. We will work with you for representation on the hiring board, as we did for my board. I believe at that time Randy was the representative for the Commissioners. It'll be to your pleasure. We will work with you as we move forward. But again, the plan is hopefully to have a health officer here in place prior to May 31st. So again, thank you so much for having me.
Thank you. And congratulations. I understand the excitement about retiring. Can we have the next speaker, please?
Yes, my name is Sunny Reiman with New Church Without Walls for Juneteenth. I'm here to suggest something and to bring a reminder. This is a cotton ball. Sometimes we need to look at what the whole situation is, to understand. Verbally, that's a whole nother thing. Tangibly.
Sir, 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 would you speak to the board, not to the audience?
Tangibly, looking at something brings you to the awareness of how serious the issue is. It's not to be swept away. If it wasn't from that, a lot of this won't take place. So I think it's worth, it's worth it recognizing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else to address the board at this time? Anyone else? Okay, so we're going to close open to the public. Commissioners, before we go around for any responses, I just want to point out, at 1:30, we're scheduled for a public hearing time certain. I believe that's kind of become moot. We still have to go through the formalities of opening it up, but I don't think we meet the criteria to go forward with it, but we'll address that. So if you're here to speak about that, that'll be the first thing coming up, and I think it's already more or less addressed itself. So with that said, Commissioners, Commissioner, anybody want to go first? Commissioner Schleybaugh.
Sure. Trying to figure, find my notes here, sorry.
Okay, anybody else? Well, Commissioner Schleybaugh is looking.
Yeah, I don't have any issues with Juneteenth. That'll be discussed here at a later date. Public notices, I think everybody understands where I am on public notices. It was in the Chronicle today. We are not going to save any money. It just needs to stay in the paper. It'll make the government look better, so they're not hiding anything, or people think they're hiding anything. And then with the pickleball courts, I do think the county probably should look down there, maybe to expand pickleball court, because it is a growing, there is a growing number of people doing it, and it would make perfect sense. So with that being said.
Okay, Commissioner Schleybaugh.
Thank you, sir. Juneteenth, yes, it is important. It's important that we remember history, so we don't repeat it, obviously, and I appreciate your support and Pastor Doug for, you know, bringing this forward, and we'll have a discussion about that. Marion Hansen, I agree with you about the public notices, like Commissioner Carnahan had said, we'll discuss that at 1:30. But as far as the sheriff, what his wage is, and what the new Administrator is going to be paid, I mean, these are very specialized jobs, you know, in charge of our commander of our law enforcement and commander, you know, administrator of over 700 employees. Not just anyone can do this job. It is a very specialized position, and, you know, I'm not going to knock the sheriff for what he makes, or a new administrator, you know, this is a, you know, free enterprise is what we live on in America, and I wouldn't begrudge anybody a good quality pay. So I just had to point that out to you, that I understand what you're saying, but, you know, give me better examples next time. But, and pickleball, I had my first pickleball lesson this weekend. I look forward to really playing this. We have talked many, in the two years I've been in office, we've talked about advancing, adding, trying to figure out how to get more fields in place, courts in place, so I'm big for that. I didn't realize Sugar Mill Woods didn't have that in that area. And Tito Rubio, I didn't hear a word you said, so if you said you were retiring, I didn't hear it, so it doesn't matter. But I do, I did take a picture of you for your retirement party, and I appreciate all that you've done for our county and your 23 years of service. Thank you, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Davis, comments?
I'll piggyback on what Commissioner Schleybaugh said about Tito. Our loss is Kathy's enormous gain, so we hope, we wish you all the best in retirement, and there'll be much crying come May, I'm sure, on our part. So thank you for your service. Let's see, Marion and Rhonda both mentioned internet. We are working on it. I agree with what Commissioner Schleybaugh said about comment on salaries. Let's see, marking my stuff off here. Pickleball, we have our Director of Community Services in the audience, so I'm sure that Parks and Rec is going to be discussing that. Let's see, Juneteenth will be, it's, nothing can ever take away the pain of slavery, and we'll be discussing that at length, I'm sure, when that comes up. Ms. Wright, where did you go? You may not, you may not need the job, but we need you badly. Our school system is really hurting for teachers and for subs, so if you have any gas left in your tank, please, please do some more subbing for us. And Livestream, we'll be discussing that at length. Sabrina, you bring up some, you know, points, and I know all of those will be looked at, but also, I've always, one of the executive things that I always adhere to is, don't bring me a problem without a solution. So, you know, if you can find us another provider that beats Livestream, I'm sure we'll listen to that, but right now, this is the one that we're working on. So we badly need a mental health facility, a Baker Act facility in this county, very badly. So that train is moving forward, and that's all I have.
Okay, Commissioner Carnahan.
Yeah, the Juneteenth and public notice issue, we'll be dealing with those shortly, and pickleball courts in Homosassa. Again, I would just piggyback on what others have said. Sounds like a great idea. If it increases capacity of our parks, then we can look at park impact fees for that district that were remaining as a funding source to get them taken care of. And Tito, congratulations.
Okay, very good. So with all that said, it is now past the 1:30 time certain. We have scheduled for a public hearing to discuss the publishing notices electronically. This came to light, I think everybody recognizes the background on it. Since that time, I think Mr. Oliver and the Clerk of the Court has supplied us with additional information, which as I read, it says we don't even rise to the first test to move forward with this. Mr. Oliver, you want to give us some additional background on it? I guess what I'm trying to say is I don't see the reason to even hold the public hearing other than we announced we have to have one.
The first criteria is you have to be able to establish this is less expensive, based on our conversation from an email from, with the clerk's office, they cannot establish that, so in my opinion, it's a, it's a bit of a moot point.
Okay, and for what it's worth, I guess we'll go ahead and open the public hearing, but before you come up and, you know, again, you can always come up and speak about anything you want, but I don't think with the information we've been given, there's any validity to move forward with it. Even if we wanted to, I don't believe we can with the information we have. And I would just say from my own point, before we go to it, I have received nothing but overwhelming correspondence and calls from people that said, "Don't change it, leave it the way it is," haven't received one in support of changing it. So to me, the public has spoken pretty loud and clear, and even with all that, if there's no savings, this was the main reason we were looking forward to going forward with the public hearing, so to speak. So with all that said, I guess I'm compelled to open the public hearing, and we'll do that now. So we're going to open this public hearing, dealing with publishing notices electronically. Is there anyone here wish to speak in regards to this? Anyone wish to speak in regards to the public notices electronically? And third and final time, anyone wish to speak? Okay, we will close the public hearing. Commissioners, I don't think, I'm going to, Madam Attorney, is there any action we need to take other than to say we're not going to do it? I mean, I don't see that we meet the standard to do it.
No.
No action.
There's, you don't need to take any action if you don't, if the board is not compelled to take action.
Okay, does anyone here wish to entertain moving forward with this?
No, sir.
No, sir.
The board has nodded in the affirmative and spoken affirmative that we won't be moving forward with this, so I think that addresses that issue. So we'll put that item behind us and move on to regular business, which consists of the bids under E1.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve item E1, A through I, second.
Okay, Commissioner Carnahan makes a motion, seconded by Commissioner Carnahan. Anyone here wish to make any comments in public? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you again, Commissioners. Sabrina Watson with the Exceptional Life Project. I would just like a little clarification on E1, herbicides and related adjuvants. Is this the purchasing of additional chemicals to be distributed in our waterways? I thought we had already done that. I'm a little confused. I know that there's going to be a workshop coming up about that, and I'm wondering, is this purchase of chemicals both prior and now that are going to be used to pollute our waterways in addition to the $1.6 million that Texas Aquatic has already received? So those are the questions I have regarding that. Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone else have any public comment related to this? Please come forward.
Hi, longtime, Barbara Ocasio, 10258, North Garden Way, Citrus Springs. I just want to read a little science here. Florida University Studies and also Centers for Disease Control and Prevention found more than 80% of urine samples from children and adults were contained with herbicide, glass, it's hard work for me, glass fascate. Okay, that's one of the chemicals, one out of many you guys are putting in our water or land. You're spraying, and manatees are dying. Last year, in one year alone, over 1,100 manatees were found frozen or starved to death. When you see these people spraying in the water, pardon me, I'm nervous today, it's been a while. You see these people hazmat suits, and you're saying, trust the science, hazmat suits, spraying in the water, not even paying attention, killing our manatee's food, killing the fish, killing any wildlife. Back in 2015, they had a study saying, "Our wildlife in the oceans, half is already dead." That was seven years ago. I have all here, but I'm not going to get into that. Just think, before we spray our, our children have no future. Cancer, liver problems. If I got a glass of water and put some of this glassified in it, just a little spoonful, would you drink it? No, of course not. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments to the bids? Any other public comment? Commissioners, any other discussion on E1? Okay, Mr. Oliver, anybody over there have any comments on those questions?
Texas Aquatics does a number of things for us, including operate the combine. I can't give you a breakdown as to where those funds are spent, but I can get that for the next meeting. This is just, gives the flexibility to use a contract the South Florida Water Management District issued, so that we can make sure that we get the appropriate solution for the job at the best available price. We are in the process of trying to set up a workshop with representatives from FWC and U of S.
Okay, Commissioners, anything else?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
The manatees are not dying here. They were dying over on the East Coast due to a lack of food supply. I am in the rivers frequently, and the manatees and fish and crabs are all very plentiful. We have huge meadows of eel grass. We have, we are pulling record tourism numbers year over year, simply because it is so beautiful over on the west side, waterways. My understanding from the last meeting, when these concerns were brought up, is that we were going to go forward with this, but schedule a workshop, and we may go in a different direction after the workshop, but we can't just willy-nilly stop what we've been doing to manage our waterways. So that was my understanding.
Okay, any other comments from board? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. We go on to item E2, please.
Yes, approved budget transfers for Parks and Recreation, Community Services, Supervisor Election, Housing Services, Beverly Hills MSBU, Citrus Springs MSBU, Land Development, and Support Services for fiscal year 2122.
Motion to approve E2?
Second.
So Commissioner Davis makes the motion, seconded by Commissioner Schleybaugh. Any public comment? Any further board discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And that's unanimous. E3, please.
Yes, adopt and authorize the chairman to execute a resolution adopting Meals on Wheels America Program grant budget for fiscal year 2122.
Say move.
Motion to approve E3?
Okay, so you have Commissioner Davis, motion to approve, and Commissioner Carnahan, second. Is there any public comment? Any further board discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. E4, please.
Yes, this is a lease with Kaylee's Coats. They do the life jacket for kids. They have a station at various locations in the county to make it safer, and we would ask for approval of A, B, and C.
Mr. Chairman, I've moved to approve E4, A, B, and C.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Slaybaugh, second by Commissioner Carnahan. Any public comment? Any further board comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. E5, please.
Yes, approve and authorize chairman to execute the agreement to provide additional insured status and waiver of subrogation between Stream Recycling LLC and Citrus County, Florida to provide additional insured protection to Citrus County.
Commissioners?
Motion to approve E5?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Davis makes a motion, second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment? Any further board discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. E6, please.
Yes, E6, approve and authorize the chairman to execute an agreement to provide an additional insured status and waiver of subrogation between Lightning Resources LLC and Citrus County to provide additional insurance protection to the county.
Motion to approve E6?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Davis makes the motion, second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment? Board, anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That's unanimous. And E7, that was the item I put on here. After conversation with Mr. Oliver, the way the schedule works out due to elections and canvassing boards and so on, we have a meeting scheduled for two weeks on the 31st, and then there's another meeting one week later on November 7th. So after talking with Mr. Oliver, I'd like to propose that we just cancel the October 31st meeting. So our next meeting after today would be November 7th.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay.
E7, second.
Commissioner Carnahan makes the motion, second by Commissioner Kennard. Is there any public comment? Any further board discussion?
Just for procedure, sir, Mr. Chairman, we just need to make sure it's a month away. That's why you did emergency, well, it's not even a month, two weeks notice to.
Well, if we, if we didn't cancel it today, you'd have to show up on the 31st.
So just, but the, the normal procedure is you have to have two weeks to, to put it out in the paper that.
Well, you have to, we, we would, we have to vote to change the dates.
Okay.
So the staff can't change the dates, only the board can change the dates.
Right, yes.
So we have to have a vote. And this would be the last opportunity to have the vote.
Before the meeting day, I understand. I was just trying to get ahold of the, the public notice part, but that, but it's more about the board doing the vote.
Yeah, if we do this, the public notice will happen if we follow our normal procedure.
Okay, thank you. Just trying to figure out the ins and outs.
Sure. Anything else? Any other questions for anybody? Okay, so on E7, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Only one to go.
That passes unanimously. Okay, item F, Mr. Oliver?
Yes, no changes to this list.
Okay, so I believe that takes us into item G1, the discussion of Juneteenth.
Yes, the board asked for an analysis of Juneteenth. Obviously, there are certain operations of the county that cannot be closed down. Those would be obviously law enforcement, fire EMS. Those services need to continue to be provided every day of the week, 24 hours a day. The cost of those services was $115,0534. We have assumed for the other, that in the other positions that are either salaried or hourly, that the tasks that remain undone for that day can be done in other available time without adding overtime or additional staffing. The total estimated cost, if you disagree with that statement, is $286,512. We would note that if you add an additional holiday, we don't think it'll be an issue, but we need to do, go to the Teamsters on a collective bargaining agreement. And the other option is, is to replace the Juneteenth holiday with a, with one of the other holidays. And in that case, there would be no requirement to go back to the Teamsters, nor would there be any financial impact if you substituted one holiday from another.
And Mr. Oliver, if we, and if the board decided to substitute one with the other, is that something that we could do a poll of county staff to find out which they would rather have or not have, or whatever?
If the board wants to, we can, we have the ability to do that.
Okay. Okay, so board, it's, the question really comes down to, it's $286,000 to add a 12th holiday to the county's schedule, or replace it if you want to adopt Juneteenth as a holiday with one that's already there and give the employees the choice of what that would be. So what's the board's? And plus, I think Mr. Oliver sent out a list of all the cities and counties that they could do a poll of, of who've adopted it and who has not. So did everybody receive that? Okay. Okay, so what's your pleasure, board? I'm sorry.
I apologize, sir. It came out in email.
Yeah, it was sent in an email. Actually, I asked for this this morning, so that's why we just got it today. And if you didn't get it, we can read it to you. What I thought was interesting is the, there's many counties that said no. Marion, Levy, Pasco, Manatee, Polk, Hernando, Broward, all those counties said no. Then you had cities of Palm Bay, Cape Coral, Leesburg, Maitland, Naples, Melbourne, and Winter Park. St. John's County also said no. City of Homestead, I'm illuminate, I'm not reading them all, Palm Beach Gardens, some of the larger ones, and the city of Tallahassee. And it said yes was, let's see, I'm looking for counties first. Latshaw County Sheriff, Latshaw County, Nassau County, and the rest of them are cities such as Miami Beach and City of Ocala, Lake Worth, Mount Dora, et cetera, St. Augustine. So that's a little bit of background of who has said yes and who has said no to adopting it as a holiday. So.
I have a question.
Yes.
For Mr. Oliver. The agenda item was really unclear. How, we do have 12 currently holidays?
11.
11, I mean, excuse me, we have 11 right now?
Correct.
So the, the day after Thanksgiving is a personal holiday?
The day after Thanksgiving is a, no, it's not personal, it's a standing holiday. It's the Thursday and Friday.
It was just, there was lots of repeats and there was no, like, bulleted list to make this easy to understand. So I sat here and wrote them down and tried to figure out exactly how many holidays we have.
Commissioner Davis, they're right here. 11 of them listed on the agenda item.
Yes, I have it, and there's multiple, multiple repeats. And it's not clear, so.
Okay.
I'm just looking for, I do know how to read, I was just looking for some clarity.
I do, and I don't see any multiple repeats, that's why I was asking.
Well, I do on mine.
Okay.
So I think it's, given all of the budget pressures that we have going on, my personal feeling is that $286,000 is a nonstarter. However, I do hear what the citizens have said. I would like to be able to recognize that day. So what are our options? Would be what I would ask in terms of, for example, do we poll the staff on, you know, do they want that holiday at all? Or do we poll the staff that yes, we are going to do Juneteenth, and what would they like to give up for it?
You can do it any way that the board wants. I mean, obviously, if it's an additional paid holiday, I would think the majority of staff would be in agreement for that, with that. If it's a question of substituting this one for another, the, the question may be twofold. Number one, would you be willing to substitute another holiday for this particular day? And then the second question would be, if you voted yes for the first one, what holiday would you replace?
Just someone to make sure.
I'm, I'm, I'm done, I'm just, I'd like to hear whatever else says.
Well, actually, I asked these very questions this morning. I asked Randy, so we're always talking about being competitive with the surrounding counties. So we, the cost has been pointed out to you, and this, this is making some assumptions, $286,000 additional cost. Most of our surrounding counties have not adopted it. So I think the first question you would have to ask yourself is, are you going to, and this would be my suggestion, you'd have to make two decisions. Are you going to add an additional paid holiday at a cost to the taxpayers of $286,000, which I believe, I heard Commissioner Davis say, that was not a way to start. I agree with that. I don't think the, the last thing we need to do is, because my question was, are we competitive with the surrounding counties? And according to the study, I believe we are, particularly our neighboring counties. So then the next question would be, and I would think would be the appropriate way to go, is to poll the employees, because I asked this question before, how did we end up with certain holidays? And the answer was, employees were given a choice. You know, would you like this instead of that, and this instead of that? So I think that would be the way to go, is to say, we keep the same 11 holidays, no change in cost, no change in union contracts, we keep 11 paid holidays, and we let the employees decide what days those will be. I think that would be the, the most appropriate way to deal with it. But that's my thinking, so. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, I, I understand what Commissioner Davis was saying, and I looked at it as like a floating holiday. I, I see the confusion where it's Good Friday slash Memorial Day, Memorial Day slash Independence Day, Independence Day slash Labor Day. But I would like to see exactly what you said, Commissioner Chair Kitchen, is what, what does the staff want? Because I, I don't like the fact of putting a price tag on an important holiday that, that's just starting out, like, oh, this holiday would cost this much money. Because frankly, Labor Day costs that, costs that much money, and I would rather see Juneteenth than Labor Day. But that's up to the staff, and we have to be cognizant of the money that it is going to cost the taxpayers, but I don't want to just dismiss an important holiday because of, of a cost. So I would, I liked your suggestion of polling the employees to see what 11 holidays they would like to have, and put Juneteenth in there and, and go from, go from there. That would, that way we could make an educated decision on what we, we need to do.
So that would be to keep it at the 11 paid holidays?
I, I believe 11 is more than fair, and just finding out which, where the ranking is on the, on, you have to add the Juneteenth there, so they have to pick 11 holidays out of 12, would be my suggestion.
Okay. Mr. Chair. Yes, sir. Commissioner Kennard.
Sounds to me like we're creating a nightmare for HR. If, I think, I think this board, while I understand and fully appreciate the significance of, of Juneteenth, my suggestion would be that if we're going to keep 11 holidays, we keep the current 11 holidays around the books, we follow the state's lead in this situation, and stay with the 11 holidays that we have. If, if we get into, I think if we get into polling staff, you're, you're going to have some that, that, as Commissioner Slaybaugh suggested, well, Labor Day's not important to me. And then you're going to have others say, Labor Day's important to me because that's the, you know, that's a three-day weekend, and my kids aren't in school, and we go, we do this every Labor Day. Or, you know, 4th of July is not important to me, or Christmas isn't important to me, or Thanksgiving is. And so then, we've, we've taken the scope of work for HR and just expanded it significantly as well as the different department directors going, okay, this person has decided that they're good with the 11 holidays they currently have. Well, this person over here doesn't want these two holidays, but they want these other, these other holidays. I, I, I think we're, we're, by, by failing to lead, I think we're creating, we're creating issues for, for our director of HR.
Okay. Any other comments? Yes, sir. Mr. Carr.
Why can't we recognize Juneteenth as a holiday, but you're not going to be paid for it? If you take Juneteenth off, you're going to get paid for the 11, but if you choose to take Juneteenth off, we'll recognize it as a holiday, but it's an unpaid holiday. Is there a problem with that, Mr. Oliver?
Now, what you can do is let people take that as, as a leave day if they want. That would be.
That would be my suggestion to, you know, I agree with Commissioner Kennard. I would take, I would, I would make a motion that we keep the 11 holidays. We, we recognize Juneteenth as a holiday also, and if they choose to take it, it's unpaid leave.
Okay, so the motion and a second. Everybody understand the motion? Okay. Any other public comment? Anyone here to speak on that motion? Yes, sir, please come forward.
First of all, I appreciate even the fact that you guys would consider this. So I don't have a problem. I mean, $286,000, that's a lot of money, I guess, for the county, when you think of all the things that the county do. But at the same time, we, we are talking about freedom, we're talking about what we all been discussing. Now, three of you came up with some great ideas, and that's good. I don't have a problem with us, you know, give the employees. You, you got Doug's in here. I mean, you know, would he take that day off? Would he want to do that? Yes. You know why? Because of his heritage. He would want that day to be with his family, to celebrate his freedom, and as he remember about where he come from. So that's something that we got to think about. And if you, if you just start somewhere, we can be the lead county. We don't have to be, I know you got a lot of, you know, stuff from other counties, we don't have to be like everybody else. We're not asking that. We're saying, let's let Citrus County be different and be the lead here, and do something that's right for the people of Citrus County. Now, you know Citrus County's different. We're a loving county, we're a caring county, and we're like a family here. So we're asking you, that have the power and authority to consider this, and you guys got some great, great, great ideas. I agree with what Scott said, excuse me, Commissioner Scott. You know, if you want to pay a day off, that's fine, we can do that. That's not a problem. Let that employee, it's not going to be a problem, but at least we started somewhere. And also, like Holly says, and, and Ruthie said, you know, we start somewhere. You know, if they choose, you got 11 days, and now you got 12 days, you know? If they choose one of those days, you know, let them make their choice. I don't have a problem with that either. All, my whole thing is that, you know, we need to make sure that it's recognized. I'm asking you guys to, let's recognize it, and then at the same point, if an employee would like to take that day, let's not penalize them for taking that day. Does that sound fair? That's all I'm asking here, is, you know, as a leader in Citrus County, as a minority leader. That's all I'm asking. You guys think about that, and think about the people. We don't have to be like, I know you got a lot, you're going to get statistics for everything. There's a lot of statistics. If I pull up the computer now, I'll pull up a lot of statistics. But that's not what we ask. We asking Citrus County, our county commissioners, that we love you guys very much, to consider what we asking, and let's be the lead people here. And hopefully, it won't cause too much of a problem for anybody, you know, and we can all get along good, and you won't see me up here again, and I can stop praying so hard. No, not really. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Can we have the next speaker, please?
Okay, I agree with Pastor Doug, and I'm going to share something with you over my teaching career. Okay, MLK was a problem. Okay, well, I was in Brevard County at the time. What we did, we took a personal day because it was in January. Now, Juneteenth is in June, so it does not affect the school system. And I'm like Pastor Doug, we have to start somewhere. There are 11 paid holidays. Now, Veterans Day, all of those are must. Even July 4th, you know, you guys get to celebrate it, and I don't mean that in any way negative. But the first person to die in the American Revolution was an African American by the name of Christmas Axe. Okay? Some people know it, some people don't. And I know we got all of this controversy going on, and the problem is, my ancestors are the only ones that came here shackled and chained. Everybody else came to America at free will. I'm like Pastor Doug, please consider it. I know it's. I know it's costly, but you don't have to deal with the teachers except for summer school, because it's all... They are already out. Okay? And I know you have to deal with budgets and things like that, but we have to start somewhere. And if everybody keeps saying, no, 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 like they did for MLK, and finally, I think it was in nineteen eighty-three, Ronald Reagan signed it and said, we gonna make a national holiday. Okay? It wasn't accepted. But please, like Pastor Doug, consider it again. Please don't just say, no, no, no. I mean, we can work together on this. Put our heads together and come up with a plan. Right now, like Ms. Davis said, I don't have one, but I can go home and think about it, and come back the next time and see what we can come up with. Thank you.
Thank you. Give the next speaker, please.
I agree with the last two speakers, and imagine that I agree with Commissioner Carnahan. So that's a big moment for me. Why not just have it as a holiday? Whether it's paid holiday or not, at least it's a start. We have to start coming together, sharing common ground, pulling together to make Citrus County better. Let's do it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello. I agree with the previous speakers. I think that you really need to reexamine yourselves. We're looking at a group of white individuals. We are talking about a black African heritage holiday, and it's serious. This area has a history, not just Citrus County. Levy County is where Rosewood was. We have habitants that actually are descendants of people that lived in Rosewood that had to escape. Okay? So it's not a simple thing that we're asking you. Yes, I like Scott Carnahan's comments and what his proposal is. However, I also think that Citrus County needs to lead this area. We don't need to look at everybody else, because I'm really surprised that Marion County and other counties that should be backing this aren't. But we should take the lead. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else speak on the motion?
Chairman Commissioners, I'm speaking as an individual, Josh Wooton, because I thought I had some historical reference that may help. I was the last commissioner of the proposed the eleventh holiday, which was Martin Luther King Day, and many of the same arguments came before our board then. So I took office in two thousand. The bill was signed in nineteen eighty-three, so that's how long it took for us to recognize that as a holiday. And we heard how much that would cost, but then we had our administrator at the time do an analysis of, well, if the lights aren't on, and the machines aren't running, machinery's not running, and we're not burning fuel, it comes down to lost productivity, but then increased morale over the course of the year could help that. So I find it hard to believe that it would cost a quarter of a million unless you just look at, well, this is what we gotta pay out for that day, that they won't be working. So I would urge you, just like we did then, we were on the right side of history, and there were some people that, mostly for business decisions, you know, which that's what I'm hearing from this board. You know, it's a fiscal decision. Certainly, you're not making a judgment about the holiday, but I would like to see y'all be on the right side of history and be the forerunner in this. Give your employees an extra day off. I think it'll help morale. I think it'll help output. And I think, think about all of the stuff that's not running that day. It's just a nice day of love for Citrus County, and it kind of puts us ahead of all those other counties. I don't know that we emulate what Levy County does on any other day. I don't know that we need to emulate what they do today. So I just think, under the circumstances with a lot of the dissension in our country and in our community, it's the right thing to do. I think history will show, if not today, that it was the right thing to do, and I trust y'all to make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Give the next speaker, please.
Kathy Gates-Inverness. If you're going to give Juneteenth the status of a national holiday, your buildings would be closed. If you give somebody a choice to choose, okay, well, I don't particularly care about Labor Day, you're gonna get it off anyway. Your buildings are closed. So either Juneteenth is going to be rated with the rest of the national holidays or not, because you're gonna get Fourth of July off, no buildings are open. So how important is Juneteenth as compared to the other holidays?
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else to speak on the motion?
Yeah, how you doing? Codman. Just to bring a reminder, I know the figures, and that was interesting here, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand. And you think about the money, but... And I know we look at our budget and try to make the maximum of what we can get, but sometime, it ain't about the money. I think about what scripture says. What good is it for a man to gain the whole world and lose his soul? I equate that with the fact of what's right and what's wrong. Sometime, we have to make a decision on the right, not on the perception of what it's gonna cost. Look at the gas prices. If it went up another ten cent on a gallon, another fifteen cent on a gallon, no problem, we'll pay it. And it's gonna be way more than two hundred and eighty thousand dollars on the scale. So it shouldn't be a money issue at this situation anyway. I understand we have to do that, but think about the repercussions of it. Think about how it's gonna benefit, what the whole cause of it is about. We all gotta stand before it and say, this why I made this decision. Everybody got to account for themselves. So think about that.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address this motion? Anyone else? Okay, we're gonna close public discussion. The only other thing I'm gonna say, I'm not a big fan of dueling scriptures, but Jesus also said, who builds a house without first attaining the cost? Okay? So there are things, especially when you're dealing with other people's money. This is not like us writing a check and saying, we think it's a great cause, let's do it. We're spending the tax dollars of the entire county. And at this point in time, it is an issue of, you could sit down and say, some people take off and celebrate Good Friday and Easter. Probably, a lot of people that celebrate it don't know what it is. Okay? But yet, they take advantage of a day off. So there's probably many people that would celebrate Juneteenth for what it is, and there's many people that would take it off and have no clue. There's a lot of people that think Memorial Day is about having barbecues and going to the beach. So it really comes down in my mind as to an issue where we want to recognize our employees to give them the time off to be with their families or whatever, and this is what we've come up with to date, and it really, from a human resource situation, it comes down to, we have eleven paid holidays. That's what is in our county. And I wouldn't, you know, again, it comes down, when we talk about the hundred and eighty-six thousand or two hundred and eighty-six thousand, remember, the sheriff still has to work. EMS still has to work. So maybe the county and the courthouse might not be open, but there's... All these other essential services must continue to go on as they do with all other holidays. So I'm not here to advocate whether the holiday is not important. It's about whether or not... It's one of those things, and I think the motion, I can support the motion, because this way, the individual person will decide, you know, if they wish to take it off or not, and if so, if they wish to use a personal day for that. Instead of a personal day for something else, they'd be able to do that. So that, I think that's the easiest and cleanest way of dealing with this, recognizing that some people have a problem with people taking Christmas off, you know? It's like, that's a religious holiday. Why do you recognize Christmas? You know, so we get into all that debate. To me, it comes down to, the majority of the employees over the years have picked these eleven holidays as the one. And again, it's great to sit up here and say, let's be the leader, let's give away more money. That's easy to do when you're spending other people's money. Okay? That is an easy position to take when you have to not be accountable for the money that you're spending. So I can't in good faith sit up here and say, it's not about the funds, because it is. But I agree. I can support the motion, because I understand it. We would recognize it as a holiday, and that, but it would be one that the individual would just, would celebrate on their own in the way they chose, and that if they wish to take a personal holiday for it, they could. That's was your motion, was it not? Okay. So, Board, any other discussion from the Board?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Yes, Commissioner Davis.
The two hundred and eighty-six thousand, Mr. Oliver, does that include the... Is that net with the lights not being on, like Mr. Wooton said, and whatnot?
No, we didn't adjust for utilities or anything like that. We don't have computations, I find. This is just salary expenses, and that is for all staff. The ones that are must-run operations are law enforcement, EMS, and fire.
Okay. I like this as a... I like the motion on the floor as a first step. I think that there is... Being somebody who is a message strategist, I will say that there is an ugly irony that could be a wonderful irony in the future, that that is a quote-unquote unpaid holiday, because what is the definition of slavery but unpaid labor? So we're about to go through class and comp survey. We know salaries for staff are going to have to change in the future. I think it would be really interesting to actually make it a quote-unquote unpaid holiday for everyone. We're closed. And that way, everybody of all descent can understand what it's like to not work, to get a day off that's not paid. However, obviously, salaries would have to be adjusted. That is purely a message strategy, not reality. Does that make sense?
No.
Anyway.
No.
Neither of you understand what I do for a living, so that doesn't surprise me. Anyway, but I like the motion on the floor as a first step.
Okay. Commissioner Carnard, any comments?
No, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Slaybaugh, any further comments?
No, sir.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. Thank you. Let's move on to item G two, please.
Yes, it's my pleasure to ask you to approve the confirmation of Aaron Dorn as Management and Budget Director effective October the eighteenth. Ms. Dorn has a bachelor's in accounting from the University of South Florida and MBA from the University of South Florida. She served, she's been with the county since May of two thousand fourteen. She's in, she was interim budget director from October of eighteen to twelve of nineteen, till we hired Colleen. And behind-the-scenes story is, I kept trying to talk Aaron at that time into being the Management and Budget Director. So I'm glad to see this before I leave the county, and I think she is an excellent choice and well-suited for the position.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion that we approve Ms. Erin Dorn for the Management and Budget Director.
Mr. Chairman, I second that.
Okay, very good. So Commissioner Carnard makes the motion, seconded by Commissioner Slaybaugh. Is there any public comment? Board, any other comments?
Welcome.
Yeah, I would just say...
I mean, to the new position.
I would just say, glad you had a second go-around at it, you know, that you did. And also, I was having a conversation with somebody today, saying, I trust two things. I trust Mr. Randy Oliver's recommendations when it comes to the staff. He's made great appointments, and also, I trust the people with numbers in our number department. So I'm very happy about that. So I can definitely vote in favor of this. Any other comments?
Congratulations.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That's four to one, and we'll record Commissioner Davis's comments when she comes back. I guess we are now cruising along, folks. We are up to, there is no advisory appointments. Anybody have any committee reports?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Slaybaugh, any?
No, sir.
Commissioner Carnard, any committee report?
Yeah, I've got, I've got a couple. We had, yesterday, we had a Keep Citrus County Beautiful meeting, and just a couple updates from Save Our Waters Week on Saturday, September seventeenth. We had the coastal cleanup, and in Citrus County alone, we had three hundred and thirty... This is, I think that this is a global thing that takes place. I know it's a nationwide thing that takes place, for sure. But in Citrus County, we had three hundred and thirty-three, three hundred and thirty people participate in the coastal cleanup. We don't have a total tonnage yet of how much trash was picked up along the coastlines, but I will bring that to you, back to you when we get that number. The, let's see here, they have the High School Jeopardy is Thursday, October twentieth. That's always, that's always a fun event. That's an interesting event, for sure. Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, I had that, that meeting was last Monday, and naturally, the bulk of the conversation revolved around the hurricane hitting to our south and impacting more of those counties, certainly than the impact that it had on us. But I'm sure that everybody has seen these figures, roughly, wind damage is currently projected at twenty-two to thirty-two billion dollars in damage. Flood was eighteen, eight to sixteen billion, and they're estimating right now roughly ten to sixteen billion of it will be uninsured, uninsured damage. An interesting comment that was made during discussions was that the video, I don't know, I don't recall exactly when, when we watched that video as a board, the Project Phoenix video that you brought back from the same group, but that, that scenario almost took place. In the, in the Project Phoenix video, which if anybody's interested from up here or listening or watching at home, I have emailed the link to that, to Doug, so he could forward that to you. Pretty intriguing video to watch. But in that scenario, they, they were projecting their hurricane to hit on October fifteenth to strike Tampa Bay initially as a category two, then it built up, ultimately struck as a category five. But this hurricane Ian, if everybody recalls, I'm sure we do, that there was talk of it building up and then dropping back down and striking our coast as a category two, I believe it was. But anyway, Ian hit, hit south of us down in Lee County, Charlotte County, on September thirtieth, just two weeks before this Project Phoenix video scenario would have unfolded. The, there was some discussion that some of these communities are starting to revisit their requirements, their building requirements for the amount of free board, I guess you will, above base flood elevation, that many counties only require that you build at or above base flood elevation. I think we're, are we at one foot above?
The state building code now requires you to be at one foot above.
Okay. Some of them were talking about that they're, they will be having discussions about going two feet above base flood elevation. Outside of that, the last thing that I had was the Resiliency Summit. I think we've all gotten notice about that, is May fourth and fifth. And what they've asked the board members to do is come back to our respective boards and find out what types of speakers would be important to our communities. You know, our, our concerns for, for these types, this type of a scenario may be different than, say, Hillsborough Counties, or, you know, Polk County, Manatee County, those sorts of things. So if there, if there are topics that we would like to hear professionals on those specific topics speak at this summit, to, that that's something that they would like for us to take back to the board members, so that they can round up those, those speakers in those areas. So anyway, it's May, May fourth and fifth at the Trade Winds. That's all I've got.
All right, very good. Commissioner Davis, on item G two...
Aye.
You both aye?
Of course.
Okay, did we get that? Okay. On item G two, Commissioner Davis was at the room, she votes aye. So that passed unanimously. Okay, and committee reports, you have any committee reports?
I have several. TDC continues to knock it out of the park with year-over-year gains. It's just crazy, and Mr. Pritchard keeps warning us that this cannot remain the same year after year, but yet, it does. So that was a long and excellent meeting. I sit on the NACO Committee, and interesting that the... I sit on the NACO committee and interesting that the, um, Chips and Sciences recompete funding is, this makes me a little ill, but I think it's a necessary pill that we need to swallow. Um, federal funding is two hundred and eighty billion and they are targeting communities like ours that are not tech centers because they want to spread out the tech manufacturing and they want to bring it home. We want to reshore, reshore our tech manufacturing because, um, the pandemic and supply chain issues certainly showed that we are highly vulnerable and we cannot fight a war, for example, without those, let alone us being addicted to our devices. So that is going to, um, it's designed to be highly flexible to fit what the community needs, the specifics in that community. Some of the examples they listed were poor freight mobility, worker skills, broadband, which is something we're working on. Um, but anything that we need to become to add tech, uh, manufacturing to this county, we can apply for some of that funds. The first fifty billion will be open for grant, uh, applications this February. So that was kind of interesting. That's all I have.
Okay, so concludes the, uh, committee reports. So we'll run down the list here. Commissioner Carnahan, any force? One more meeting. All right, okay. Commissioner Kennard, anything else?
Nothing.
Commissioner Davis?
Uh, yes, sir. As you know, I'm working, um, to push the strategic plan along. I've done a lot of, um, public speaking the last few weeks, uh, explaining what process we're in right now. Um, I would like to ask for, um, blessing by this board. The forty, uh, the forty citizen representatives that we all voted on have not gotten together since April. Um, it's impossible to find all of them on my speaking engagement. I would like to personally privately host a gathering for those forty representatives to make sure that they are fully briefed on this. Um, we're closing public input on October thirty-first, so I was going to do it to give them this weekend, basically to give them about a, a week to be able to put ideas in because this has to be a citizen-led initiative and we've gotten some fantastic ideas submitted already. So if that's okay with y'all, it's no county funds, no county facility, anything. It's just me doing it. But I wanted to be, um, transparent about it and ask for y'all's blessing.
Board? Anybody have, uh, issues or not?
Well, here, here's what I can say. I, I, I wouldn't wait until the new board takes a seat because, uh, you know, you've got two new commissioners coming on.
You might take a different, you know, there might be three, you take a different turn. So, I mean, if you want to go ahead and do it and put the work in, that's fine, but, uh, you know, just understand that you've got commissioners coming on that, uh, might not be in line with the strategic plan and might, uh, you might go a different direction.
May I respond?
Sure.
They can, all of us are putting ideas in if we want to, including regular Joes off the street, um, the future commissioners, everybody. So. It's supposed to be, it's a community-led, uh, it's a community-led effort. So I'm, I'm hosting a private party, guys. That's all I'm doing. And I just, because it's the forty that were the forty that we voted on, I, and then specifically because I want to speak about the strategic plan, just to make sure that they have any of their questions answered. I'm just asking for your blessing, that's all.
I guess I don't have a problem, you know, if you're not spending county money and, and county staff is not involved in that type of thing. My whole issue is that you stay within the confines of whatever the board has approved. Um, sometimes these things take on a life of their own and end, and commissioners end up taking it in the direction that the board did not approve it to go in. So although I won't be here, uh, that, I think that's always a concern because no commissioner, you've heard me say this, I don't know how many times, has any authority by themselves. Only what the board, um, uh, bestows on them. Also, the same with, uh, speaking on behalf of the board. So if somebody asks me, as the chairman, what's the board's position on this, I tell them what the board's position is. It doesn't necessarily reflect my own personal position, but once the board has taken a position, that's the position of the board. So, um, and in the past, we've had some commissioners that have gone out and said, well, the board doesn't know what they're doing. They made the wrong choice. Uh, everybody needs to come up and tell them they're wrong. That's not the way a collegial body works. So as long as this stays within the confines of what the board has approved to do and it doesn't go beyond that, I, I don't have a problem.
May I answer? I am absolutely positively specifically not coloring outside the lines on this, including when I speak in public. I am absolutely following to a letter what the board has approved.
I don't hear any objections.
Yes. I don't have an objection to you, um, getting input from the forty people on your own dime. And thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Okay, sounds like there's no objections. Most Commissioner Kennard had one. I didn't hear an objection from him, so. Yep, okay. Let's see. Commissioner Slaybaugh, anything for us today?
Not today, thank you.
Okay. I have an item or two here. The first one is the discussion and approval of the employment agreement between the county and Steve Howard for the citrus county administrator position. I'll give you the short version, folks, um, and we can go into the long version because we spent many hours in discussion, myself and the attorney and Mr. Howard. And, um, as a matter of fact, he's here today and I think everybody's aware of that. Um, but the bottom line is, he started at one point and we started at another point and he didn't get everything he wanted and we didn't get everything we wanted and we kind of met in the middle. And, um, so it's kind of in line with everything that, that we had talked about before. There were some issues in here which, which I don't think are going to be sticking points, but I just really wanted to make some clarification today so we're all clear on. And, and if you wish, I'll, I'll leave it up to Mr. Howard if he wants to come forward here and discuss, debate, answer questions or whatever. But the only, the only thing that I understand to to date that we've talked about is, is, um, he feels due to the nature of the work, and I think he read it in here, that, that he would like to have a full-size SUV, which some of our people drive, I think a lot of the shares people drive. But what I would ask is that i- i- if it's not a hang, a sticking point, that until, if we don't have that available on the day he starts, if he can get by with what we have, that like, a bigger sedan or whatever, until such time one becomes available. So I hate to put you on the spot, but I'm gonna put you on the spot. Is that a, is that a sticking point? If, if we don't have that, an SUV on day one, is that a problem? Yeah, can you, can you go? Yeah, I know. And I, and again, the only reason I bring this up today is this is the last thing, I, I think it's all been ironed out except that, that.
Yeah, that's not an issue.
Okay, perfect, okay. So with that said, it, would you disagree with what I said? You didn't get what you were looking for in the beginning and we, you know, so we.
When, when you try to reach and that's what, that's what I think we accomplished.
I think we did too. And I, and I, my point was, um, I think the board, um, was impressed with Mr. Howard and I know I was, but I have to tell you, after discussions with him, I was even more impressed. I've had several conversations with him the other night, wasn't it? Uh, Monday night or whatever, I.
Actually, for government workers, we actually worked at nine o'clock one night on a Friday. Uh, so they say government workers don't work late. We were actually working late on a Friday night.
And I understand too that you visited the community and, uh, and I, and I don't want to muddy the waters. We'll talk about this separately, but, but, uh, if the board moves forward to this, I want to spend a little bit talking about transition.
Sure.
So let's, let's deal with the, the contract. Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we accept the contract of, um, Steve Howard.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Carnahan and a second by Commissioner Davis. Is there any public comment? We have a public coming up, so.
Mr. Chairman Josh Wooten, I was walking my dog in the dog park behind LGV Wonderful Park and there's a new Tahoe sitting back there that Mr. Brock used to drive.
Thank you.
That is currently assigned to a different employee.
Yeah. But we won't let that bother. And again, what that had to do with the motion, I don't know. So, okay, is there any other public comment in relation to the motion? Okay, there is no further public comment. So we have a motion and a second. Um, is any further board discussion? Yes, ma'am?
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to say I appreciated the hard work that you and, uh, um, Madam Attorney put into this contract. I know it couldn't have been easy. And, um, there's some things that I think that, um, I was very pleased with, some things I'm accepting because I'm counting on your, um, expertise and your negotiating power, which I think you're a very good negotiator, as a matter of fact, concerning taxpayer dollars. So I just wanted to just put that out there that I did appreciate what you've done for our county and, um, didn't always agree with the timeline, but you, you, you were able to do it and this board came in agreement and, uh, Commissioner-elect and a, and a candidate agreed with it. So that's a big win for you and, and for the county and thank you for that.
Thank you. I hate to be leaving now because we're actually getting along, aren't we?
I've learned how to deal with you. That's how it is. I, I have, I have acclimated, so, but I do appreciate what you do.
Yeah, I'm like sandpaper. I wear you down. Any other commissioner comments? Anything else? I, I just want to say, um, I'll, I'll be very candid as I always am. Um, I, I, I told Mr. Howard, I said, um, when I announced that I wasn't running again, many, many people came after me trying to get me to change my mind and I said, no, no, no. And they said, well, if you, if we can't talk you into running again, at least when you leave, make sure you get a good administrator since Randy's leaving too. And I told Mr. Howard, I think we've done that. If the board approves his contract, I can leave here next month knowing that we left citrus county with a, with a good administrator, just like Commissioner Car- uh, Carnahan and I did when we came into office eight years ago. We, we hired a good one at that time, so I hope this is history repeating itself. So, uh, I'm, I'm fully confident. There's some things in the contract. I'm just gonna be again, i- it's in the contract, just so you're aware. Um, I encourage Mr. Howard not to ask for everything the first year. Let him prove how brilliant he was, how good he was gonna be, and then he can do further negotiations each year when his review comes up. And that's all spelled out in here. Um, so I, without further ado, I, I, I fully support this and, um, I'd just like to call for a vote this time, right? So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That's a five oh vote. And I will say, I'll break my own rule and applaud this time.
Well, I'm humbled and honored, uh, for this opportunity. I'm eager to tackle the issues for citrus county. I look forward to working with the board, the present, uh, and the future as well, and, uh, the past as well, as we move citrus county forward together and the employees and the citizens working together as a team is important to me. So again, thank you for this opportunity and, uh, it's a great day. I'm looking forward to twenty twenty-three. It's gonna be a big year for citrus county as my family makes our transition here. I just ask for patience for that. I think I've talked to each of you about that. It's a big move as we go forward, so I'm gonna do my best to expedite that process, but also take care of Camden, my home for fifteen years as we go through that. So we actually talked to some real estate agents already. We're working towards those issues as well, but couldn't really do anything until this actually happened today to make my next steps. Thank you all. It means a lot to me.
And you may not want to go too far if you just have a seat there because we're gonna discuss something that will affect you.
Absolutely.
Okay. So, uh, commissioners, thank you so much. Commissioner Slaybaugh, thank you for the kind words, but, um, uh, uh, again, if, if, if Mr. Howard didn't want to come here, wasn't my, all my negotiating skills is the fact that he was willing to say, well, okay, sure, you know, I can, I can deal with that. So, uh, but I think it's because he's met the people in the community, he believes in the community and we're excited about that. So here, here's the thing that, that also I think is our responsibility and that is, um, now we're not gonna have a meeting on the thirty-first. Our next meeting will be November seventh. That'll be Randy's last meeting as well as mine and Commissioner Carnahan's. And I believe that, um, uh, Steve, you start on the twenty-ninth, I recall, right? Okay, so that means we're gonna have from the seventh to the twenty-ninth, I believe we're gonna have, my math says about three weeks, okay? Um, what I would like to recommend, I've discussed this with Randy, I don't know if he's talked with any of you all, but we have several, two, three or more people on staff that, that he believes can step in seamlessly just to steer the ship, you know, for those three weeks, okay? And, uh, my concept is that, that we would ask Maricel Rodriguez to be the, what we would call the interim or stand-in county administrator for that three-week period. But my understanding also is, is that Mr. Howard said he can be back and forth. He's gonna be on the phone totally, so it's not like, you want to explain how you see that working?
Actually, I've got a meeting tomorrow with Mr. Oliver. I appreciate his willingness to do that. So now that I can kind of begin hitting the ground, I work quick and fast so I can hit the ground running. Um, so if I, once I get a laptop and cell phone, I'll begin that process, but absolutely, I'll be connected, I'll be available, um, to be able to make sure it's seamless transition.
So you're not gonna disappear for three weeks and show up in three weeks?
No, I think I've got, nah, I'm not gonna do that, but I've also got commitments back home to get a house ready to sell it and pack it up and all that stuff. So I have all those issues.
So there won't be a void during that three-week period and you, you'll be, you would be able to work with.
Absolutely. Yeah, the whole goal is to continue to have communication.
And again, the other reason I make that is I, I talked to Mr. Oliver. He said of, he's got several people that he feels could do it. Um, but he brought her name for it. I asked him to check with her, so I wasn't saying something, because you know me, I don't ask people, staff, anything, you know? So that, that would be my recommendation. So I don't, I guess we could put that on the November seven, if you're okay with that, we could put that on the November seventh, uh, meeting to make her the interim, uh, direct or administrator or whatever, uh, that we call it for that three-week period. Does anybody have a problem with that?
Nope.
Nope.
Oh, I, I love that idea.
Okay.
Wow, that's too bad today's not our last meeting. This is everything's going.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I ask a question though? Um, are you, um, you know, unfortunately, the timing of this is right around the holidays and we, um, as much as I would like Randy at the helm on our first new, our first new board meeting, um, I feel comfortable with Maricel. I, I appreciate her expertise, but, you know, we have one meeting in December and we're asking somebody to move during the holidays is the November twenty-eighth day. I know you needed a date for negoti- for the contract, but is that the date that you were comfortable, have you given Camden enough notice? And, uh, is, is there some play in that for, uh, Mr. Howard and his family over the holiday season? Um, I just wanted to bring that up.
I'll let him speak for himself, but my answer was no. It was twenty-ninth, he was gonna be here, right? So that.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think we're, you know, if I could have like a, like a call, soft landing as we move, I mean, I'm gonna, I'm gonna need flexibility, you know, as we do that, just to get all that in, in line. There's some other commitments I have. My wife already told me that. Um, so she said she will not get divorced. She'd only be widowed, uh, which would not be good for me. I don't want to sleep with one eye open. Uh, so I'll be cautious with that, but there is some, you know, flexibility and some, some of that I'm gonna need as we move forward, uh, with some commitments I have in Camden.
And we, and again, uh, in all fairness, Mr. Howard, we caught him off guard because, um, first he had to give his notice in Camden, which we understand and we appreciate. But the other one was, he was not aware that.
No.
That we transition after election that quick. He was thinking it was gonna be the first of the year, January, like the constitutionals, the sheriff and those folks are all sworn in January. Um, and so he thought there was gonna be that much time in between. But I have to tell you to his, to, he's the one that came up and said, let me talk to my wife, let me see a way of doing this, let me try to do it. So, so we came back with that. His official start date will be the twenty-ninth, but we've agreed to give him some leeway and if he's, uh, working with Maricel, then he can, you know, there's that. You might have somebody standing in for you a couple of days a week or something during the transition.
That's what I need to flexibility with.
Okay, very good.
Just to get through a couple, a dance recital, you know, these, these kind of pretty high priority things for my daughter.
I figured that you had that arranged. I just wanted to make sure that the public understood that.
The board working with me on that.
And I, and I appreciate, you know, till the twenty-eighth, you're kind of working for us for free and I think the taxpayers should know that. So.
I'll be here. I plan on being here on the twenty-second, actually not working, but being present. Um, so I'm trying to make sure that I'm getting, you know, plugged in as soon as I can, as quick as I can. That'll help you and everybody else as we hit the ground running.
Right. He told me he wanted to be here for the swearing in of the new, um, and we called it a five oh vote, but if we go back in history, it's actually a seven oh vote because the two commissioners coming in also supported him. So I think that's a great, great way to begin this. Um, is there any objection then to, and I'm glad you brought these questions up because we may know them or I may know them and other people don't. So if we don't ask the questions and give the answer publicly, it's hard to say. But we did. We, we got down into some nitty-gritty on this because I, I told him, I said, to a degree, I said, you have to be here when the new commit, when the new board takes, takes seat. So, uh, he will be here that day and then he may be in and out for a little bit, but, and you're always gonna be in contact once, will he get it, when will he get a phone and all that type of stuff? Yes, ma'am?
Well, I think he's getting a little gun shy when he sees my number come up on his phone. I'm, I'm waiting for the time when he's like, is she really calling me again? Um, but we can, uh, like, uh, Steve said he's gonna meet with Randy tomorrow. I'm sure a lot of that will be ironed out when he and Randy, uh, Randy loves to get people plugged into computers and phones just as soon as he can. Um, so I'm sure that'll get all ironed out.
Okay, well, uh, then I guess the, then if you're okay with that arrangement, Maricel is okay with that arrangement, um, and the board's okay with that arrangement, then we'll put that on the November seventh agenda and that, that would take place then, I guess, effective that day, right? If that's our last meeting or the next day or whatever.
The next day.
Okay. Board okay with that?
Yep.
Good, very good.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Howard.
Thank you all again.
And I think this board has done a marvelous job of, uh, seeing through this transition. Appreciate Randy hanging in there, sticking with us. Appreciate the board sticking in there and sticking with the process and you as well. And you as well, your due diligence. And, and I'm sure, uh, we're going to feel the way we feel about Tito leaving us. Um, you know, Camden's loss is our gain. So we feel for them, but we're happy you're here. So.
Thank you. I appreciate the warm welcome. Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, so, let's see. And, uh, it takes care of all my items. Madam Attorney, do you have anything for us?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay, this is final section of open to the public. Is there anyone here to, um, address the commission one final time? Okay, we have no additional public comment. Um, our next meetings were scheduled, but now the number one, October thirty-first, has been eliminated, so you can take that. Our next regular meeting will be Monday. And remind everybody, that's Monday, November seventh, because Election Day is the day after that. And, uh, then the re, uh, next meeting will be a reorganization meeting on Tuesday, the twenty-second. Even though it's Thanksgiving week, I think the law requires the commissioners reorganizing its warrant in two weeks after. So, and there are no, uh, workshops coming up. We have no more public hearings. Commissioners, any final words before we adjourn? Anybody have anything else? Okay, seeing no further business, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, can I ask a question about your.